Four, committee of Christiansburg Town Council to order. And before we get into anything else, we have a, I have an email request from Councilman Wilson, who is traveling on business and has requested that he join by phone. I need a motion and a second for that.
I'll make a motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Tim, you still there?
I'm here.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Berman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hoppett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
It's hard to keep up on the phone, isn't it, Tim? So, as we go into our moment of reflection, as we always do, I would like to ask each and all of us here for some special considerations. One for Councilwoman Hicks's son, James, who was injured this past week at school, and Councilwoman Hoppett's daughter, who's recovering from a school injury. So, if we take a moment of prayer. If you please rise and join us for the pledge of allegiance, last, uh, Councilman Bishop.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands united nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With any, well, first of all, there is one item that is listed on our agenda, uh, under discussion by mayor and council, which is E, and it has been struck from the agenda, so we will not, uh, be discussing that when it comes to mayor and council. Is there any other, uh, adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none, we will go into, I think we have a pla- a public hearing tonight, solar franchise power equipment purchase agreement. Mr. Nelson, you want to kick us off?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. All right. I'm gonna start us off where we left off last month, February, wherein the town council authorized the advertisement of the solar franchise power purchase agreement, public hearing tonight, and concurrently advertised for competing bids in accordance with Virginia Code for this, for this project. Advertisements were run in local newspaper for two consecutive weeks, March 2nd and March 9th, advertising the public hearing tonight and requests for competing bids. I'll take a moment and comment that we did advertise in local paper as required by state code, but we also put it on, uh, the state procurement website, Eva, and I received call from Colorado, from New Mexico, from Georgia, from North Carolina, and a call from Canada, inquiring about the project, so it, it reaches out there. So, despite all that, we did receive two proposals, one from DE Solutions Solar Development LLC, and one from Sun Tribe Solar LLC, who submitted the original proposal. They submitted by the March 19th deadline. Proposal review committee was formed to review and score the proposals based on the advertised score sheet that was in the RFP. Based on that, the committee has selected Sun Tribe Solar for execution of the solar power purchase agreement for installation, operation, maintenance of solar arrays at the recreation center and at the aquatic center. I want to touch on some of their proposal highlights for your benefit. Their project team resources, they have over a hundred solar professionals, they have over three hundred years of combined experience, have a proven track record assisting with public education and outreach. Their project team experience includes over two hundred and fifty combined projects, either under constructed, under development or as constructed now. They've worked with fifty-three Virginia municipality PPA partners. And Sun Tribe Solar, uh, they were the first in Virginia, I'd like to highlight, they first school division powered by a hundred percent solar, first gold certificate pollinator project, uh, first solar project on a reclaimed coal mine, first net metered project greater than one megawatt, and the first virtual net metered project. I'd like to point out at the top, Madison Energy Infrastructure, uh, that's new with this proposal. At this proposal's submittal, uh, Sun Tribe has amassed their entire team to work on this project should they be awarded it. From, uh, from construction, installation, all the way through Madison is their financier on this project. I'd like to point out some things, uh, the two sites, the solar arrays they proposed originally haven't changed. I'd like to share some, some information about this, these rates. During the, uh, RFP stage, we asked for a zero percent escalator. So, based on a zero percent escalator over twenty-five years, at that rate, uh, at the rec center, we estimate savings of eight hundred and twenty thousand. Same with the aquatic center, nine hundred and ten thousand, that's one point seven three million. The, um, at the two and a half percent escalator, they estimate a savings of six hundred and forty-five thousand at the recreation center and seven hundred and forty-five thousand at the, uh, aquatic center, for a total of one point three million. I'm gonna point out some assumptions here. This project is no capital cost coming out the gate, and there's no ongoing maintenance of this system whatsoever by the town. It's totally maintained by, by the team, Sun Tribe Solar. The pricing of the zero escalator, we put that in there, not knowing what we will get. We wanted a zero escalator so we could see the bare bones. If we got multiple proposals, we could see who is proposing the best rate. Now, excuse me, that is an option, that is an option, that we could realize that much savings. The difference is, is that the rate is higher, and we're not realizing as much savings coming out the gate first few years as we would if we went with a two and a half escalator, which has a lower, uh, price on, per kilowatt hour. So, that's something, uh, should we elect, you elect, that we move forward, something we can negotiate and see what, what is best for the town. The one-year target production here will be, uh, will be, uh, updated once they get the commercial, uh, get the notice to proceed to move forward, that AEP's inspected the system, and they can initiate, uh, energy, energy generation. And this, they, they assume they can, they have their team assembled, they can get started in May, should we so choose. Again, uh, they will retain the, uh, the recs, the renewable energy credits, uh, we don't want to be in that business, and they have a team that focuses on that. And just consider that over the last fifteen years, AEP's rates have risen on average at three point nine percent annually. Again, uh, operation maintenance, uh, is totally handled by them through the twenty-five year, uh, contract period, and they as well would decommission it if we chose to, uh, no longer, uh, operate the system. So, on that note, uh, I'd answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Wilson says I can't see you, raise your hand. Do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
If you have one, answer it, if you have one, though.
Mr. Nelson, we did do a study, and those buildings will hold us panels correct, the structure of the buildings?
That's part of this contract.
Okay.
That's one of the first things they'll be doing, is analyzing it, uh, structurally, and looking at the condition of the roof as well.
Okay.
They're very open about that. They don't wanna, they don't wanna, they don't wanna be in a bad situation, they don't want to put us in a bad situation, so.
And I guess you said once again, you did say that this would not cost the town a penny?
That is correct.
Okay.
Except for, the, so far, I've uncovered a fifty dollar application fee with AEP, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna answer truthfully, sir.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Sir.
I'm really excited about this project. I've been talking about solar panels for years now, and I'm glad that you guys took on it, and it's getting to the point where we're actually having them up on those rooftops. One of the questions that I did have, I noticed that at the aquatic center, it's only gonna be thirty-six percent, uh, right? Um, but there is a possibility that it will meet, uh, the rest of the electricity needs for the aquatic center, or is that the max that it will be able to?
That, that's the maximum, that's projected. Between the waste treatment plant and the aquatic center, there are big energy users.
Oh, yeah.
Of course, you know, recreation.
I mean, it's a lot of money that it will be saving, and that doesn't take any consideration, the fact that electricity bills keep going out the rooftop too.
That is right.
I do appreciate all of that work, and, uh, I have a question regarding insurance. I'm sure that this will have to have some type of insurance variance and stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Who will be covering that? Is that gonna be part of our building insurance, just to make sure that?
They, they will have their own insurance policy on file with us, and I, we have been in touch with our insurance company as well, let them know what our.
Is that gonna be an extra cost to us by insurance?
Not, no.
Not, not.
It's not, not really our facility, they, they own the panels, correct?
Correct. They, it's all theirs.
And going back to what Mr. Bishop had said.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, structurally, I, you know, we had some, it seemed like there were some issues at the very beginning when we were building the aquatic center, as far as just safety, as far as making sure nobody, nothing happens in this facility, but just to make sure the roof will be able to sustain people and everything and the equipment being installed and, and things like that?
Yes, and I've been in touch with the architect, I have the shot drawings for that structure when it was built, so we have a wealth of information at our fingertips to help with this project.
That's fascinating. I'm really glad to hear about the, about this. So, thank you for all the work that you have put into this.
Very good. Ms. Hoppett, any comments, questions?
Thank you.
Casey?
Yeah?
Ms. Berman?
Very good.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to address this issue? Seeing no one, I will close this portion of the public hearings, and we'll move on to our consent agenda, which consists of the approval of the minutes of the March 12th, 2024, and March 20th, 2024 sessions, monthly bill list, we have to award a contract to EC Pace Company Incorporated in the amount of four million, four hundred thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents for construction of the Hickok Street Drainage Improvement Project, resolution recognizing April as Autism Awareness Month, a resolution recognizing April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and a resolution recognizing April 1 through 7, 2024, as National Public Health Week.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments, questions?
Yes. About item C, um, I am sad that the, the prize for the Hickok Street project went from like two and a half million dollars to pretty much doubling, uh, to the four point four million dollars, four hundred thousand dollars, well, four million, four hundred thousand dollars more on this project. But one of the questions I have for Randy is, how much was it that we paid on easements additional to, is that included under this, or was that?
We, we do have all the easements now, and they've been obtained. There was, I think, uh, I guess we had said that we'd had all the easements, there was one that we actually needed to have a revised easement, but we do have that now. So, all the easements should be in place.
And how much did we pay off?
Off, off the top of my head, I can't tell you a total, but I could, I could give you a total.
Okay. And I think, I want to board on this item, but one of the questions that I have is, I want to make sure that the discussion was taking place with Reed as far as making sure that there is something in the easement consent from the owner, uh, the Alphons especially, in Hickok Street, just to make sure that there will not be, you know, any other issues arising from the closing of that street for a little bit, but, well, it's actually probably gonna be for, for a while, uh, while the street is being fixed and taken care of. I want to make sure that before I was even gonna board on this, just to make sure that that's taken care of, and there is no future problems something arises from this, as far as money given out or something like that. So, are you a hundred percent sure?
Well, could, could I guarantee a hundred percent that, that a property owner could never sue us for, for this project? I can't really guarantee you that, and I can't really guarantee you that with any project. Um, I wouldn't anticipate there being, you know, any type of problem with this project.
These are all friendly easement.
We, we, yes, we did willingly, property owners, all property owners willingly gave us, or bought, sold us easements. We didn't have to condemn anything for the project.
Read, does it sound reasonable to you?
Sounds reasonable.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
So, we were going to call Hickok Street because, and then there would be a loss of revenue or something like that? Is that somewhere in the documents or anything like that, that protects the town from that?
Well, I think it's like Randy said, you can't guarantee that anybody will sue you for, for, there's always that potential.
Okay.
Has there been an update on the grant funding?
We did.
No, ma'am, not, not as, not as of this meeting, there's not been. We're, like I said at the last meeting, we anticipate, uh, an answer in April or May from VDOT on any additional funds.
Next one. Any other comments or questions? Tim?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Berman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hoppett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Thank you, Tim. All right, that's six, so, thank you. Uh, introductions and presentations, and before we get into the council program, Randy, do you have an introduction you'd like to make tonight?
Yes, just like counsel, uh, introduce you to new planning director, Rado Wilson. She comes to us from the town of Hillsville, where she's, uh, served as town manager there for, I guess, about the last ten years, and, uh, she was also a manager and administrator there and dealt with a lot of, of planning and development issues, just to.
Welcome aboard. Here's Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority Executive Alan Cummins to present on authority operations. Hello? How you doing, buddy?
Good, how about you?
Good.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for your time this evening. Um, I'm gonna thank Randy for the invitation to come and talk to the, the council. It's been years since I've really talked to the council about Merzwell, so he said I get about thirty, forty minutes, since it's been so long.
Yeah.
And, uh, just kidding. Randy didn't say that. Ten minutes, he said ten minutes and I cut you off.
You can leave your ear after the meeting.
What's that?
You can leave your talking after the meeting.
So, Merzwell, um, the Montgomery Regional, I'll, I'll go by Merzwell, it's the Montgomery Regional Solid Waste Authority, created back in nineteen ninety-five by the, by town of Christiansburg, town of Blacksburg, Montgomery County, and Virginia Tech, uh, pretty much said, "We want an authority to take care of all of our solid waste needs, recycling needs," and that's what we've done since nineteen ninety-five. We are a nonprofit organization, and we're located on Cinnabar Road, over where the new cat and dog shelter is located. It's a fantastic location, we have about hundred and fifteen acres over there, and it's pretty much centralized in the county. Whoever did locate it did a really good job, and we get hundreds of vehicles in and out of the facility every day, and we never have any traffic issues. We haven't had any traffic issues, and it's, it's a really good location for, for the Solid Waste Authority. We are overseen by a five-member board, um, one board member from each of the jurisdictions, and also an at-large member, and we're, uh, pretty much, I like, I look at us as a enterprise account, uh, we, we don't get any tax dollars, and in our budget, we're pretty much fee-based, whatever revenue, revenue we generate through fees of the solid waste we handle, or of the recyclable commodities that we sell, that's what we pretty much develop our budget on. I'd love to talk about my team, um, I could spend ten minutes just talking about my team. They, they are why we're successful. Uh, ten years ago, we had twenty staff, and we would handle, ten years ago, about seventy-five thousand tons of, of waste between solid waste and recyclables. Currently, we have eleven, and we've cut our staff by nine, and we're handling over eighty thousand tons. Uh, we're a skeleton crew, but we're all cross-trained, myself. We, we could all handle multiple jobs, multiple job descriptions, and I'm proud of every single one of them, how they can, can handle when, uh, one or two crew members is gone. Uh, they are, they run very efficient, uh, they, they come up with safety ideas, they come up with, how can we do services better, uh, how can we run more effective, uh, they're just a tremendous team, and I can't tell you how great they are. We do have a material recovery facility that handles a, a variety of recyclables, so what does Merzwell recycle? We recycle, we recycle cardboard, tires, clean wood brush, white goods, metal, uh, we have a buyback center for metals, we handle single stream, and we are currently back up to doing two household hazardous waste events a year, and I'm gonna talk about each one of those. We have a payback program for cardboard, segregated cardboard that comes into the, into the facility, a lot of businesses bring their cardboard to us, I think we're currently paying about thirty-nine dollars per ton to them to bring their cardboard in. We bail the cardboard, and we handle about fifteen hundred tons of cardboard a year, and, uh, we sell it to regional mills in the area. We have a tire day on Wednesday mornings from nine to noon, where we take in tires from citizens and businesses, and we have a facility, we send the tires to that recycle the entire tire, the metal out of the tire and the rubber out of the tire, everything gets reused or reused, and we handle about three hundred and fifty to four hundred tons of tires a year. It, and it's every year, it's steady, it's amazing how many tires are created. We also have a clean wood brush facility, we take in about sixteen hundred tons of clean wood and brush, picture on the left, we have it, we have about three grinding events a year, and it's ground into mulch, and we sell that to the citizens. We also have a white goods metal facility, we currently are actually paying back two to three cents for metal, uh, we take any metal that, if people, and it's free, um, we don't have a charge for metal. We also have a white goods pad that's combined in there, we, we take refrigerators, any type of white goods, we just ask that the refrigerators are empty when they bring them in, that's not a good thing, when you open up one of them and there's a lot of food in there, but the only fee we have on that is if it needs decommissioned, if it has freon in the refrigerator, we do have a fee for decommissioning that, but that also gets recycled, that freon. We have a buyback center, we take in for free automotive oil from citizens, and we pay back, I think it's currently fifty-two cents a pound, for aluminum cans, we pay back for metal cans, uh, copper wire, copper one and two, lead, any, any type of metal, if people want to bring it in and recycle it, we'll, we have a payback program for that, and it all gets recycled at, and our recycling facility, we send it all to, is Gerdau out of Roanoke. Single stream, we, we take, we handle single stream, we take about four to five thousand tons a year of single stream, and a single stream is just everything that can be recycled, especially curbside, can be thrown in there, cans, glass, paper, and plastic containers, and, and right now, plastic containers are for the only number ones and number twos. One thing we, we've been able to bring back into the budget the last couple of years is the Household Hazardous Waste Days, the public loves these, they're the second Saturday in April and November, we have it at the facility from nine to two, and we've made it very simple for the public, they call us, we put them on the calendar for a time, say nine o'clock, nine oh two, nine oh five, they pull in, we have someone that takes the, the household hazardous waste out of their vehicle, gives it to the MXI scientists, and they're on their way, so they're in about a minute, and we're able to handle any of their household chemicals and paints, their compact and fluorescent bulbs, and it's, again, it's free to any of the citizens in the member jurisdictions, and it's, uh, really, really well-liked in the area. The facility, we are mandated by the state to reach a minimum twenty-five percent recycling rate every year. Since two thousand and six, we've averaged thirty-two point seven two percent recycling, and our last report that I submitted to DEQ that was just approved for calendar year twenty twenty-two, we, we hit thirty-one point one percent. We'd also on the site have, again, we're a hundred and fifteen acres, we have a transfer station that handles a variety of solid waste, it handles household trash, commercial trash, sludge, construction debris, industrial waste, and dead animals, and that facility probably handles close to seventy-five, seventy, seventy-five thousand tons of, of material per year. Talking about fees, I did want to give the council kind of a fee update, um, our household trash disposal fee as, at inception, back in nineteen ninety-five, was fifty-three dollars a ton. Our current fee is seventy-two dollars per ton, that's a sixty-six cents per ton increase per year the last twenty-nine years, and there is gonna be, and we're projecting an increase in the existing or upcoming budget fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, household trash will increase two dollars per ton, and single stream recycling will also increase by two dollars per ton. We also have a fifty-five acre closed landfill on site that we manage. It was closed, officially closed in two thousand and two, it's, again, about fifty-five acres. We monitor the groundwater throughout the year, quarterly groundwater monitoring, to make sure there's no groundwater issues happening onsite or offsite. Uh, we also monitor the gas, the, the landfill is still producing methane gas, so it is also made sure it's contained onsite, not migrating offsite. Also, the water that goes to the landfill, there's a collection of tubes underneath there, that collection is, it's called leachate, and we collect that leachate, and it's pumped then to our pre-treatment facility. We have a discharge permit with the town of Christiansburg wastewater treatment plant, and in the parameters there, we've gotta get the water that we take out of that landfill, we've gotta get to certain parameters to meet certain parameters, and that pre-treatment facility, um, I think I have a picture right there, we, we handle about five hundred thousand to a million gallons per year, that we make sure gets to the right parameters and tested before we send it to the Christiansburg wastewater treatment plant. We also have an existing gas flare on site, any, that the landfill is still producing methane gas, we have a, a blower on site, kind of a big straw, it sucks all the gas out of the landfill, so now the land, none of the gas migrates offsite, for one thing, but we also destroy all the gas that way, there's no greenhouse gas that can get out, and so all the gas is, is destroyed by our flare. And you, when you think of a landfill, you think of a trash tube, uh, and it's not good for anything, uh, and a lot of landfills are like that, we, luckily, uh, my, my board is very proactive and therefore very forward-thinking ever since I've been the director there, and back in two thousand and ten, um, we looked into, how can we utilize the gas at the methane, or the, the gas that the landfill is producing, and we were able to work with a professor out of Virginia Tech, and he had created a co- a company called GKW, and he took two Cummins engines and he converted that from a diesel engine to accepting our gas and creating electricity. So, for about nine years, we were taking the gas out of landfill and creating electricity and going right to the grid, so that was a pretty neat project. It ended in two thousand and nineteen, the landfill is, is old, it's getting old, and it's not producing as much gas as it used to, and so that's, that went to the wayside. But, um, for the last three or four years, we've been looking into solar farms that are landfill, and I'd be happy to, to say to the council and to the mayor that in January, we signed an agreement, that was funny, Wayne just mentioned Sun Tribe, that's who we are working with also. Um, they are a Virginia company, uh, the, the first part of the agreement is a- The first part of the agreement is a five-year option agreement for them to do all the studies, get all the permitting that they need. After that, there's a 30-to-40-year lease agreement. They're projecting to put a 3-megawatt system on the landfill and also some potential battery storage on the landfill, which would be very neat. And they're hoping to have it up and running by the end of 2026. And the funny thing is, nobody will know it's even there. That landfill is way in the back, it's hid, and people are producing a lot of electricity, and people won't even know it. So it's a really good location for a solar farm. And it's a win-win. It's, landfills, like I said, you can't do a lot with them. They're continuously, sometimes settling, they're not stable for building on. But it's a win-win. We might make a little bit of revenue to help offset our fees, keep our fees low, and then we're creating electricity at the same time. So the board and myself, we're very excited about that project, and we can't wait for that to come online. That's might be what it looks like in 2026. You never know. We do have three permitted facilities through DEQ. Our closed landfill tire facility and transfer station are all permitted facilities. So multiple times throughout the year, DEQ comes out and does inspections on all three sites. And I'm happy to say good kudos to my team. We've had zero notice of violations the past 20 years. So team does a fantastic job of keeping us environmentally compliant. And I'd also like to say, kudos to my team, kudos to the board. In 2022, we were, we won the Green Business of the Year Award from the Chamber of Commerce. Like I said, feel very fortunate for the team I've got. They work hard, and I feel very fortunate with the board I work with. Again, they're very proactive, they're very forward-thinking, and they're always looking at ways of how can we do things better, more cost-efficient? And how can we be, what can we do best for the environment? How do we not harm the environment? So very fortunate there. I think, Brandy, you didn't cut me off, so I think I made the 10-minute timeline there. But I do tours to schools, to Virginia Tech. I do, to anybody who'd like to come, I think I have a tour coming up next Tuesday with one of the council. So if you've ever liked a tour, please come out. I give them all the time. And if you have any questions, and if you don't have any tonight, but if you have questions, please email me, give me a call, stop by. I'd love to answer anything you've got.
As far as the hazard materials in April and November, are that, are they advertised anywhere?
Yes, we give it to all the member jurisdictions. They put it out. We put it out on our website. We try to get it in the paper. And we're getting well over 100 vehicles per event now. So, yes.
Thank you.
Great question.
I'm really glad about the information you brought in today, especially because there are so many people out here today to see it. I was actually going to ask you, Wayne, where are you going to put the solar panels up? And you brought it up right there, so that's great. I'm glad to hear that. Is that, once you guys do that, that we'll be able to, the company will probably be able to resell some of that electricity? And that's where you're talking about you'll have some revenue, right?
It's interesting. Net metering isn't a big thing yet, but our members are very interested in net metering, virtual net metering. So since there's a five-year, three-to-five-year option, or maybe two years, if there's a lease agreement, that they would pay us a lease upfront. But in the meantime, if the General Assembly changes some laws to allow more than just one county to do virtual net metering, and we're able to do it, the agreement's to the point where it can be switched to maybe we do more of a virtual net metering agreement. And because, again, to get back to your question, because they are selling so much electricity, yes, we do get to reap some of the benefits of that.
I have another question. Can you explain a little bit about the dead animals? Because I don't want everybody to bring their dead animals over there, so can you please...
Yes. It's mostly, that's a great question. VDOT, we get most of those from VDOT. They patrol the roads for deer and that sort of thing. Once in a while, we might get a dead cow or horse, but that's very uncommon. It's mostly VDOT bringing in the dead animals from the highway and sidewalks.
So just clarifying.
Good question. Yeah, you don't know, there's, no, that's correct.
And then, when I saw you, I guess several years ago and everything over there at the facility, you were talking about, I guess it was probably about the DEQ testing and everything, but there is some testing that you had to do every so many years. And then there is eventually, you can stop doing a lot of that monitoring. Is that still continuously, are you guys still under that radar for those testing to get done? And when are we expecting to be done with those?
Great question, great memory. Yes, we were closed, it has to do with the landfill closure. So in 2002, since we were officially closed then, you go into 30-year post-closure. And that's when you have to take care of the landfill, the groundwater monitoring, the methane monitoring. And so I think we have eight years left. And then we'll be, we're supposed to have been to be done, but that's up to DEQ in eight years.
Okay. Great. Thank you for coming out here and giving us this great information.
Mr. Wilson?
I have nothing.
Okay.
I've been to the facility. It's nice. It's so well taken care of, easy and convenient.
I sat on that board for about a year, and it is really quite interesting. Mr. Jenkins? Ms. Bowman?
Thank you. I'm looking forward to the tour next week.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you. Just remember, your trash is our treasure.
Okay, we have Downtown Christiansburg, Inc. to provide an organizational update, introduce Advancing Main Street, and discuss the added value of having a paid staff. Ms. Travis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, thank you to our downtown supporters who are here today, and staff, of course, for having us. I'm here to present an organizational update on Downtown Christiansburg Incorporated and tell you a little bit about the Virginia Main Street Program. So first, a little bit about who we are. We were founded in 2013 with the first-ever food truck rodeo in downtown Christiansburg. In 2017, we incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. We are community-driven, and we have that community-driven approach to economic development. We're advocates for placemaking and collaborative planning, and we're all volunteer-led. Our values are that we are approachable, inclusive. We don't take ourselves too seriously. We like to have fun. We value strong communication internally and externally. We believe that we're visionaries. We act as a community resource. We pride ourselves on our accountability, and we advocate for Christiansburg because we love this place that we live. Our mission is to foster partnerships with the Town of Christiansburg, businesses, and community members to promote a vibrant downtown. And we do this through community-driven programming, public advocacy, and local events. Our vision is that downtown Christiansburg serves as a thriving destination of business, culture, opportunity for our greater community. A little bit about our board. We are nine people strong. Many of them are here today. We have economic developers, architects, emerging tech and IT leaders, teachers, small business owners, public health advocates, all on our board. And we're really proud that we meet monthly, have successful transparent board meetings. We also have four committees. Many of our members are here today, and I'm going to talk through what those committees each do. As I mentioned, in 2017, we incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, and part of that was to adopt this Main Street approach. So I'm going to talk through a bit about what this four-point Main Street approach is. I'll show you some examples of how downtown Christiansburg is already operating within this structure. And then I'm going to talk about how a paid staff person could elevate us and our Main Street to the next level. So we have these four points. Economic vitality has business owners and property owners together to create a supportive environment for innovation and entrepreneurship that drive our local economy. Our organization committee involves creating a strong foundation that's sustainable. It's about partnerships, community involvement, volunteer engagement, and actually getting grants and resources for the district. Our design committee is about how downtown looks and feels and how people can interact with downtown in an accessible way. It works to enhance our physical and visual assets that set downtown apart from any other district. And finally, promotion is about positioning downtown as the commercial district, the center, the hub of our community, celebrating that positive image of Christiansburg and showcasing how unique we are as a community. So here are some highlights on what our committees, our volunteer committees have been working on. The first is design. Our signature project is the Great Little Park on Main Street. This was a community-led, community-driven effort, and we're really proud of where we've come. The design committee works on public improvements, building improvements, and the protection and management of our historic and natural resources that we have downtown. The design committee also managed the Crab Creek Watershed Project, which we collaboratively wrote with the Town of Christiansburg and the Regional Commission to get $100,000 from the state that went directly into the pockets of our Christiansburg citizens to put native planting and best management practices improvements to help with our Crab Creek Watershed and reduce flooding. The next committee is organization. Organization is all about getting people together, getting community together. You see here, we have some volunteers from our Great Little Park, our Rockin' Main Street. And last year, we were able to put together our local art schools, art students from Christiansburg High School, together with local business owners and some of the Christiansburg tenants you see here, to decorate our downtown just in time for the Town of Christiansburg Christmas Parade. So I'm really proud of all that the organization committee, I'm proud of all the committees, but organization and committee, yeah. The next committee is the Economic Vitality Committee. This is comprised of property owners, investors, entrepreneurs, business owners in downtown. That area of focus is around business development and real estate development. They also have a role in assessing our Main Street and developing metrics and indicators to ensure we have a return on investment. You see pictured here, some three fantastic business owners that opened shops that are a big draw for the entire New River Valley, and we're really proud of them, and some of them are here in the audience today. The Promotions Committee is the last one. Their signature initiative is a monthly newsletter that goes out to our audience. The Promotions Committee is around defining our Main Street niche, looking at our downtown assets and promoting those, understanding the changing market. And we already know, you know, Christiansburg is the place to be, but we want downtown to be the place that you choose. Of course, the Promotions Committee also has our signature event, which is our food truck rodeo. So I'll ask Andrew if you could pull up the video. This was also created by a local downtown business, so we're really proud of our partnership with Aspire Marketing on this. And we'll just show, it's a minute and a half. We'll just show a couple scenes, 30 seconds. Awesome. Thank you so much. So that just gives you a taste of our food truck rodeo. So that leads into an exciting announcement, which is, for the first time ever, the Town of Christiansburg Parks and Rec Department and Downtown Christiansburg are collaborating on a joint event September 14th. We are really proud to be hosting a Rockin' Food Truck Rodeo, which we believe is going to be the biggest event ever hosted in downtown Christiansburg. So we are really excited about that. Details to be announced soon. So in the last couple of minutes I have here, I wanted to share just a little bit about the Virginia Main Street Program. It's because this is the next step for us and for our town to further develop our downtown into this thriving place. So it's a program that's administered through the Department of Housing and Community Development. There is a really strong return on investment for Main Street. So in 2022 alone, 49 million in public investment was matched with 49 million in private investment. Downtown catalyzed the creation and retention of 241 businesses and 825 jobs. So the Virginia Main Street is part of a tier system. And right now, we're in the Exploring Main Street tier. We've been there for 2018, and we're eager to apply for the Mobilizing Main Street tier in this fall. What happens when we get up in levels from Mobilizing to Advancing Main Street is we get increased support from the state, which is technical assistance and also financial support. So you can see here, just through Main Street alone, we would be eligible for community vitality grants, financial feasibility grants, and then downtown investment grants. But beyond just the grants that you can get from DHCD alone, being an official Main Street community is a signal to the state and the federal government that they can invest in our downtown as well. So for example, you might have heard the governor announced $500,000 last week to Pulaski Main Street and Marion Main Street. We are closely in contact with downtown Withville, which is one of the big Main Street communities. Earlier today, the executive director sent me a list of all of the grants that they've received, which total over $2 million since 2014. They've also partnered with other organizations to receive an additional $1 million in funding. So a Main Street director would help develop downtown, both in terms of economic and culture. So this would all be co-developed together with the town. But in terms of economics, they would work on some economic strategies based on historic preservation, utilizing existing community resources. They would work with businesses and property owners to enhance the visual appeal of downtown and increase investment in downtown. They'd work to develop awareness and education campaigns among the public as well. In terms of culture, they would continue fostering and developing these partnerships that enhance our downtown festivals and joint promotional events. They would work with all of our four committees and our formidable group of community volunteers to move the things forward that the citizens of Christiansburg would like move forward in our downtown. And finally, they would seek and prepare and administer grants. So why invest in downtown and why not invest in the other 12 commercial districts in Christiansburg? That's something that I hear often. And the reason is community development and economic development. So downtown is a symbol for our community. It's a symbol for our economic health. It is a symbol for our quality of life. It's a way that people feel prideful about the community that they're from, and it also celebrates our community history. It's also the heart of our community. We have government, we have nonprofit, we have churches, we have art, we have financial institutions, all in our downtown. It's also an important community space where all of our members can come and enjoy parades and events, and we know that Christiansburg loves to celebrate. It can also become a tourist attraction, which is really important as one of the key economic development strategies in Christiansburg is sports marketing, so increasing the number of people who come in for tournaments and events. Those people need to spend money somewhere, and we would rather them spend it in Christiansburg than go to Floyd or Blacksburg or elsewhere. So really promoting our downtown will help that money stay local and increase the economic impact of the things that you're already investing in. In terms of economic development, downtown is really great, has an incubator for small business, it's a major employer, and it also stimulates the local economy. It's also a smart fiscal decision. A recent report by the Brookings Institute, they looked nationally and found that typical, a typical downtown in the U.S. produces more than seven times its tax assessable value relative to land area. So investing in downtown is a fiscally smart thing to do for the taxpayers. And finally, I'll end with enhancing downtown Christiansburg, we believe truly enhances all of Christiansburg. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson? Tim, you there? You got any questions?
Yeah, I just have a word to speak. So I just can't thank you enough, Kelly, and all of the members of the Downtown Christiansburg, Inc. crowd. You know, I back this position, I back the program, and excited to see where it's going to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you get the building owners on board?
Yeah, it's, so there's national Main Street conferences where there's a property owner track. And a lot of it is around working with the property owners to help them understand the value of their buildings. Sometimes what you can do, if there's a, it's called like a white elephant building or a building that's kind of underutilized. I think everyone could raise their hand about a couple of white elephant buildings in downtown, right? And so what we do is work and get money from the state to do a
just on Hickok Street. A project that was supposed to be at two and a half million dollars is over $4 million. And when we are looking at the budgets and things like that, we're talking about needing more emergency services. And I know economic development is very important. We're spending the money, you know, the resources too. We're doing the Aquatic Center. We have a beautiful park, the Huckleberry Park. We have another nine parks. And so, I appreciate the fact that you're bringing this out, and I am trying to figure out how in the world can we pay for all these things while at the same time providing what the town citizens want, which I want parties downtown, and I'm excited about it. I dance with them all the time, and I'll be at the Truck Rodeo, because it's an exciting place to go and a, and a great thing to go to. I think right now, for me, I, I love that you're having this discussion and keep bringing it up, because it's important. But as far as like the, as far as that position, I think it's something we really have to discuss regarding the budget, and that's for me, personal opinion. Thank you, Ellie, for everything.
You don't need to convince me. I've seen this work in a lot of other localities across the Commonwealth, so I see the model, I see it works, and I see the passion from your volunteers, committee members, and board members, which gives me a lot of faith down the road of this being exactly what you hope it to be. So, thank you for being here.
I think this is a smart and strategic approach to downtown. I think the value of investing in our downtown and having someone to coordinate it just makes so much sense, and there are so many rewards and benefits from that, economic and benefits for our citizens. So, I just appreciate you and appreciate all the DCI team. So glad you all came out to be here. Appreciate all of your work. Just thank you for being a great partner to the community and caring so much about Christiansburg to invest your time into downtown.
Thank you for the presentation. I would like to know a little bit more about it. I am new to Town Council and am just learning about what you guys are doing, but, you know, I am all about helping small businesses, but also understand that we have to pay attention to the budget. So, I'm still trying to learn more about it before I make up my mind.
Okay. Appreciate that.
And I guess, Ellie, although it is called Main Street, does that mean that the feeder streets like Franklin Street, can they be, are they involved in this thing too, or you're looking at an area?
Yes. So, we, we would co-develop an application for what counts as our downtown historic district. And usually, it's around the closeness of the buildings and the ability for pedestrians to get through them. So, what, we have a definition now, there's actually a couple different ones, but what we would do together would be to draw those boundaries and decide this is our, our Main Street Historic District, and that would be what we focus on. So, it would, it would likely be many of the, the side streets. Yeah.
Thank you.
Do you have any statistics, for example, like Withville, for how that's brought additional businesses and, you know, what kind of economic impact it's had just from locating new businesses in downtown?
I don't have that off the top of my head. I know, I just looked at their website before, and they have all of those stats. If you scroll down, it will show you how many new business starts they've had. And a lot of them actually have been in conjunction with the Community Business Launch Program. So, there's a lot of synergy between all the efforts that Christiansburg's taking, but I, I can, I can get you that information. And Todd from Downtown Withville is a resource. He's happy to host us if we'd like to go down and, and look at what they've done, understand a little bit better.
Yeah, I would like to see that, and if there's other areas that are, you know, like similar, you know, that you could bring statistics on, I would love to see that.
Certainly, yeah. We did a case study in 2019, and we used Stanton, Withville, and Lexington as our cases. There have been new Main Streets, especially further southwest. There's some really cool things in St. Paul and Marion, so we could, we could certainly update that and provide you those updated numbers.
I mean, when I think of Withville, I don't really think about a thriving downtown, so...
Have you been recently?
No, I haven't. So, maybe I need to take a tour and see what's going on.
It's only 40 minutes away. Same as your own, okay.
I have another question really quick, Ellie. I would love to see you guys not just taken on Town of Christiansburg, but go to the county and even have these discussions with the county. We are part of the county as well. And I think I would love to see the partnership with the county, and not just DCI, but DVI. And, you know, and as far as their economic developers, what are they doing there? Can they do that here too? They have a bigger budget than we do, and we definitely pay a lot more taxes to them than you guys even pay us right now. But I think it's important to have those partnerships going, especially because we are part of the county. And so, and I think they have a big play to play in here, especially where, you know, they're taking down structures that were historic, and then we have not, no control over that. But you guys can be a voice for the Town of Christiansburg as far as what do you guys want in the downtown as well? As far as even the building that's going to be built over there, it's one-story building and everything else, the one that, where they took down the old magistrate's building, and now there is a new structure that's coming up. It's only a one-story place, and, and it's probably not what I would like to see in a downtown. So, I would love to see you guys go into those meetings and really speak for ourselves and say, hey, this is what we want in the downtown. Provide us more parking, provide us this.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure that Main Streets are designed for counties. I think they're more municipalities. Am I correct there? As far as that goes?
I, I think that Montgomery County is a big property owner in downtown, and I think that a stronger relationship with them would benefit our town. So, yeah.
I want to thank you for what you're doing, because my first round for council, one of my things was to bring businesses downtown, and I quickly learned, it's not as easy as you think it is. You have to get the building owners on board, but thank you for what your group still wants.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Treasurer Finance Director Val Tweedy to present the 2425 budget. And I'm going to ask council if you'll hold your questions till the end.
Good evening. I will try and make this brief, since we've had a long meeting already, so I will try and make it as brief as I passively can without jumping over too much. So, our budget policy requires that by the second meeting in March, we present you with a proposed budget, and that's why we are here this evening. So, just to reiterate, for the benefit of those who are new to council and for the members of our audience, we have six distinct funds that we budget for, but we kind of pool that all together when we're looking at the numbers, so you have more of a total scope of what everything looks like. We have two enterprise funds, the Water and Sewer Fund and the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. Each of those have their own revenues, their own expenditures, their own capital costs, and they're all contained within those funds, and those funds are not used for general purpose, general fund-type things. We also utilize a special revenue fund to account for funds that are either grants or donated for specific purpose and can only be used for that specific purpose. So, those can't be, you know, moved over to the general fund or whatever if they have money left over. They have to remain designated. We then have capital projects funds. These are the major projects, mostly for transportation, trails, streets, roadways, those kinds of projects that aren't dedicated to one of the enterprise funds. These are typically funded by large amounts of grants from VDOT and other sources, and some are entirely general fund-funded. So, all the support for them may come from the general fund. The general fund is basically where everything else goes. Sorry I skipped the cemetery fund. It is required to be in its own fund because of the perpetual care responsibilities of owning a cemetery. All the funds stay there. Every year, all the sales of all lots and all niches goes into a perpetual care fund to grow a fund that eventually will maintain the cemetery in perpetuity. That's the intent. Don't know if we'll make it there, but that's what goes into it every year, and those funds are not used for any other purpose but the cemetery. The general fund is where everything else goes. So, all of our public safety, most of our public works, barring the enterprise-type activities, are all funded out of the general fund from our tax revenues, meals tax, lodging tax, the various categorical aid, law enforcement funds, highway maintenance funds. All of those are housed within the general fund. All Parks and Recreation comes out of the general fund as an accounted for within the general fund. So, overall, from our economy, and things have been steadily increasing this past year, we've seen an uptick in meals tax of about 7% year-over-year, and so for next year, we're protecting about a 1% increase. The sales tax has been trending up about 4% so far this year, and we're projecting a 2% increase for 2025. Our lodging taxes are down a little bit, but we're going to hold the revenue stream flat for 2025. Personal property tax, we expect to remain relatively flat this year. Real estate tax is projected to have slight increases just because of increased property values with respect to new development within the town limits. There are no proposed increases for water, sewer, or garbage fees in this budget, and there are no other proposed fee changes within this budget. So, where does all the money come from? The revenue from all of the funds, general fund, special revenue, enterprise funds, all of that is 73.5 million. We expect to see about a $15 million loan for the water and sewer projects this year. The remainder of it will come from general fund assigned fund balances. These are the funds that we have been setting aside over the last five to six years for major projects that we knew were coming down the road, such as the Aquatic Center, the financial software package. We had been putting that into assigned funds. So, we have a variety of those that were, we currently have about 6.7 that we're going to dedicate to projects this year in this proposed budget. Unassigned fund balance of 9.4, which are going into projects, special revenue fund balances of 139. Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund balances of 3.9 million, and Stormwater Enterprise Fund balances of about 2.5 million, for a total sources of funds of $111 million. And that's just a short little graph. This presentation will be up on the website tomorrow morning for you, if you'd like to print it off or take another look at it. Some of this gets a little hard to read, but the picture graphs are kind of nice to give you a concept of where the big chunks of revenue come from. Water and Sewer Fund, Meals and Lodging Tax, Property Tax Revenues, Capital Projects Funds, all of that. So, in our Capital Projects Funds alone, we're looking at $10.2 million in grant funds this year.
How much?
$10.2 million in grant funds for, for capital projects. So, some of the uses of funds, general fund operations are 36 million, general fund capital needs are 11.4, cemetery operations are a little over 300,000, capital projects are 16.1 million, special revenue operations in capital is 5.5 million, water and sewer operations is 10.7 million, water and sewer capital is 23.7 million. That does include the $15 million for the major upgrades at the plant. Stormwater operations is, operations is almost 900,000, and stormwater capital is 6.4, for a total of $111 million. And that's just a quick graph of our appropriations, the funds, how they would be spent, so kind of our uses of funds and where they go. So, water and sewer consumes about 25%. Public Works is 9.5. Aquatics and Parks and Rec are about 6% of our budget. General Fund Capital's about 5, and Stormwater Operations are less than 1%. So, if you look at the revenue chart and the expenditure chart, it looks like there's this huge gap. That is primarily the result of we budget and appropriate funds for project last year, for example, and the year before, and the year before, and we don't complete those projects. So, we're essentially just rolling those dollars back over year-over-year. So, it's not, we said last year, we were, we were doing 25 million. Well, you know what? We didn't spend all that 25 million, so it's back again next year. We reappropriate the funds every year based on what the cost is to complete the projects and what's been completed to date. Operating cost increases are primarily salary and wages, added personnel, increased cost of materials and services, and most of the increases we felt were reasonable in light of the inflationary trends that we've been experiencing post-COVID. Some of our operating revenues are, like our meals tax and that, are up as a result of the inflation as well. So, it helps cover our inflationary increased cost also. It's kind of a vicious circle, that inflation thing. So, in this budget, we've presented four new positions that we discussed at our work session back in early March. One full-time firefighter, two more EMS positions, and one new police officer, which would be funded at least in year one as a result of, from the New River Community, New River Valley Community...
Resources.
Resources, thank you. I knew there was an R in there somewhere. And that will be grant-funded at least for year one, but that is a new officer to comply with the Marcus Act. The town, the proposed budget includes a 3% COLA, which has a cost of about a half million annually, 332,000 in the budget because it's only for three-quarters of the year, and a 2% merit increase. For capital, we're looking at doing the HVAC system in, at the Aquatic Center this year, some renovations at the Rec Center. The two solid waste trucks that you committed to last year that didn't make it this year will be delivered sometime in July or August, so those are included. The fire station, sort of partially that design and footprint that we talked about for property needs and development. There's a full list of all these capital items on page 57. Total capital this year is about $57 million. In the capital projects funds, we cut back a few of those because we've committed so much in some really large projects over the next several years. So, we've kind of held back on, on starting too many new things in that regard. We have kept the Franklin Bridge Deck resurfacing project in this budget. We have managed to squish it all in there. Along with the Hickok Street project, we had discussed cutting that back. We also have the Aquatic Center HVAC air quality included. And in the Water and Sewer Fund, again, we, we have a lot of new projects coming for the wastewater treatment plant. We have that low, low interest... The town, the proposed budget includes a 3% COLA, which has a cost of about a half million dollars annually, 332,000 in the budget because it's only for three quarters of the year, and a 2% merit increase. For capital, we're looking at doing the HVAC system at the Aquatic Center this year, some renovations at the rec center. The two solid waste trucks that you committed to last year that didn't make it this year will be delivered sometime in July of August, so those are included. The fire station, sort of partially that design and footprint that we talked about for property needs and development. There's a full list of all these capital items on page 57. Total capital this year is about $57 million. In the capital projects funds, we cut back a few of those because we've committed so much in some really large projects over the next several years. So we've kind of held back on starting too many new things in that regard. We have kept the Franklin Bridge Deck resurfacing project in this budget. We have managed to squish it all in there. Along with the Hickok Street project, we had discussed cutting that back. We also have the Aquatic Center HVAC air quality included. And in the water and sewer fund, again, we have a lot of new projects coming for the wastewater treatment plant. We have that low interest loan with the RA with about a $450,000 forgiveness as a part of that loan, and we will be moving forward on that soon. Part of the water and sewer fund capitals, the Buffalo Tank, starting design of the East End Waterline, Silver Lake Interceptor, Arrowhead Sewer Shed, pump station upgrades, and all the waste treatment plant upgrades. In the stormwater, we have the Hickok Street improvements, the industrial park, stormwater management, the College Street Drain Project, and Phase Two of the College Street Project, as well as some projects for the Blue Leaf Channel stabilization. Community support has been included at the amounts that we discussed back in March. I haven't gotten everybody's surveys back, so once I have those back, then we will change these numbers in the next draft. The items below are all of those items that we are members of those organizations. They're quasi-governmentals, so they don't do the application process. They're just groups that we support as a part of us as a local government, and we are members of those groups. So for those of you who haven't turned in your surveys, I put a new one on your desk tonight. If you would make sure and get those turned in, I'd appreciate it. So next steps in the budget are, we will hold some work sessions as requested by council for any items that you would like to discuss. Hopefully hold the public hearing either May 14th or 28th. We'll consider comments from the public hearing and, of course, input from council and make any adjustments. And then the final budget has to be approved by June 30th of 2024. Or we all go home. Questions?
Hi, Dan.
Go ahead.
Have a time.
Oh, okay. Happy to hear.
Thank you.
So when you have the revenues, you had 88 million, 300 or 527,000 dollars on it with some change. You said during there that there was, there would be $10 million in grants, but then we have the older budget that shows 111 million dollars on revenue. But the revenue includes the loans and things like that, right?
The revenues.
Because you showed this.
I broke out separately here. They are in the, those revenues are in the chart. The 15 million are in that 88 million. But if, this is really the sources that all the funding comes from, which is not all revenue.
So where is it where the grants are?
Is in that 73 million.
How much of that is grants? It's got to be more than 10 million.
As capital projects alone is 10 million, but there's more than that in there as grants.
Okay. And then we're spending on 111 million, 324,000 dollars, and that's what includes all of the grants and things like that.
It, yes, and the source of the funds to fund all of that comes from these sources, which is all the revenues, the loan proceeds, unassigned fund balance, and assigned fund balance, and then fund balances in all of the other funds.
So can you go back to the draft with the circle thing really quick? The spend on one, the appropriations.
Mm-hmm.
Where is the grants and where are they under each of the categories, I guess, right?
Yes.
They're not separated.
Not in the graphs, no, but they're broken out in the budget document if you want to pick out just, you can see where the grant revenues are in the budget document.
We started this because we just got it tonight, so.
We'll probably have a schedule of work session. We'll probably schedule it tonight.
And then the repaving, I saw that the Franklin Bridge, I thought we cut that back out of, you were able to, I didn't get that part. So are we back on it on fixing that?
It is in there right now, yes.
But not the repaving, right? We had to cut that down?
No. The Franklin Bridge Deck project is still in the budget.
And then I thought there was some repaving and stuff we had to cut down.
We cut down annual paving a little bit to be able to afford that, and we're using some assigned fund bad, assigned, start that again, some assigned fund balance for street reserves to help fund the bridge deck.
And how much did we cut down from the repaving for the year?
About a half million dollars.
Half a million dollars. And then about the fire station design, can you tell me where is that, for where is that designed for? Is that for Roanoke Street? Is that for the one next to Huckleberry Park?
That was the one to look at, whether it would fit on the footprint of, whether we could come up with a building footprint that would fit in that acreage next to Huckleberry Park.
Okay. And have we gotten our results back, or this is just to put on the budget?
To just put it in the budget.
For future.
And then, of course, that would be after July because it's next year's budget. But we would potentially hold off on that pending, I guess, make sure that's the right location before we did any type of design. So before we expended that money, we'd want to make sure, like I say, that we have the right site.
How much will it be assigned for that item?
Right now, there's a million budgeted.
Right. There's a million in it, and that's coming out of the assigned fund balances for the new emergency services building. So, but obviously, if we don't need to spend a million dollars on that, if we only need to spend 100,000, that's all we're going to spend.
Yeah. And then can you remind me again, what's the Blue Leaf Restoration thing?
Mr. Keller.
Several years ago, the town did a stream restoration project, and part of that stream restoration project is maintenance that has to be performed on it. I think it's about $80,000 that's proposed for us to hire a firm to come in and perform that maintenance on that stream restoration. That's what, that's what that part is. So it's continual maintenance.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Wilson?
I'm good.
Mr. Thawke?
I'm good.
Mr. Bishop?
Good.
Mr. Jenkins?
I'm good.
Ms. Bowman? It's all Greek till we read through the document. Okay, very good. Well, thank you.
You're welcome. It's hard to summarize 100 and some odd pages.
Committee reports.
Citizens. Citizens comments.
Oh, yeah.
Citizen comments.
Thank you, yes, Sam. This is a portion of the meeting where we open it up for citizens to comment, and the procedure is you will come to the microphone, give your name and address, and you address your comments to me as the chairman.
Chris Waltz, 1370 Ruby Street. DCI came up, Ellie came up and talked about wanting this $150,000 position. She mentioned Withville, Downtown Withville Incorporated. I have some figures. Since 2014, so 10 years, they've got $29 million in public and private funds. There have been 76 businesses created, retained, or expanded, so not necessarily created, and they have had 237 jobs created or retained. That's not economic development. That's not much anything, but a waste of money. The poverty rate for Withville is 25.8% versus Christiansburg at 12.9. We have a higher median income. We have a lower crime rate. The unemployment is nearly double that of Christiansburg. And they only pay $84,581 for their Main Street person. I don't know why ours would be so much more. And you could take that money and get the other two rescued and the other firefighter that have been requested in the budget, you know, things that save people lives, not things that maybe make downtown look pretty or waste a lot of money. And I've also researched the Main Street. And it, most of it can be done without hiring somebody for $150,000 a year. There's an interesting thing on getting grants, it's on YouTube, put out by them for this budget year. And it was also mentioned, the great little park on Main, which, if I'm not mistaken, is on the auction block now, and we're going to lose it, which is another waste of taxpayer funds. Thank you.
Anyone else to address council on this matter?
I thank you for this opportunity to speak.
You want to pull the mic down to just let in your name and address? Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Laurel Scarry. My, our son Michael moved here in 2007, and he kept telling us to move to Christiansburg, that we would love it. Finally, in 2020, my husband Tom and I moved to Christiansburg from Northern Virginia, and we love it here. We love the friendly, caring people and the peacefulness of the town. The employees of the town do a wonderful job taking care of it. They plant flowers, and they take care of them, they trim the trees, they put up banners and take them down in a timely manner, and as they, they keep the town so clean and take care of us. We love attending the festivals and the events downtown, the parades and the other festival, music festivals and so on. We also have awesome facilities here, the museum, the Huckleberry Park, the Aquatic Center, the Rec Center, and other playgrounds and parks. But one of the things I'd really like to see is the downtown revitalized and thriving. And I really appreciate Ellie's presentation that she did tonight. We love, Tom and I have really enjoyed visiting quaint, small towns all over, and we love walking and shopping and dining in those places. We have a good foundation here in Christiansburg to build our downtown and to revitalize it. And as Ellie said, we have people coming close to our town from all over, Virginia Tech parents and students, we have people coming to swim meets and other sporting events, as well as thousands of people passing by on I-81. And there's a sign on I-81 that says Historic Christiansburg. And so what will people, what will be waiting for people when they get off the highway to visit? And we already have some wonderful businesses in downtown and restaurants and so on, but we, we could do, use a lot more, and how exciting would it be to see people visiting, shopping, dining, and simply enjoying our beautiful, friendly town. So I urge the council to approve funds for the paid director of Downtown Christiansburg Inc. in order for us to become part of the Main Street America program, which would enable us to apply for grants and take advantage of other resources to help make our downtown a vibrant, thriving area where people will love to come and spend time. And again, I thank you for your time and the work you're doing, and I'm always willing to help any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. Anyone else would like to address, do the citizens' comments?
Hi, my name is Crystal Pretty, and my husband is here also. We moved here last year from Roanoke, and we're so glad that we did. We would like to see the town council support Downtown Christiansburg Inc. We've really been happy with what we're seeing, the events, and the things that they've also talked about, not only the money that will come into the town, but it's important that, especially after COVID, people be able to get out, have a reason to get out and visit, and it brings meaning to our lives. So there's a, there's a part of this that really hasn't been spoken to, but I hope you'll consider that reason. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Barber and Town Council. I am Ashley Hill, and I am not only a resident here in Christiansburg, but I am the small business owner of the Chandlery Candle Adelier and Home Boutique that is located in our historic downtown. And I'd like to show my very uttermost support for council approving a budget that would include a position for a Main Street Director. To start, I would like each of you to know that I very intentionally picked our downtown as the location for my brick and mortar storefront, because I believe that downtown is the heart of a community, and I want to be a part of the charm, the nostalgia, and the offered experiences that a downtown offers. Currently, our downtown holds so much potential, and I believe a Main Street Director would be exactly what we need. Sorry, my phone keeps scrolling up on me. Be exactly what we need to focus attention to the needs of our downtown, execute well-laid plans for prosperity, and oversee growth. Bringing my storefront to downtown Christiansburg is just one way I have been showing my sincere interest in the revitalization of our downtown. I, along with many others, want to see downtown thrive, to see the sidewalks bustling with community members, meandering from shop to shop, enjoying meals at locally owned restaurants, spending weekend mornings at the farmer's market, and participating in local events. I believe it is implementing and prioritizing the role of a Main Street Director that will bring about the restoration and enjoyment of our downtown, to retain current businesses and encourage new businesses to put roots down in our downtown. If helpful, I'm always happy to share the insight I've gained over the last year of having a storefront downtown, and thank you very much for your time.
Good evening. I am Chris Chittenden, 1718 Lyons Drive. I'm also the grateful owner of Downtown Small Business, Sweetgrass Yoga, and like Ashley, I was very intentional in placing my business downtown. Had lots of opportunities to be elsewhere, but, and a parent and of a former swimmer and a current travel volleyball player, I have opportunity to visit many small towns up and down the East Coast. And I will say, as I arrive in a new town, the farthest thing from my desire is to wander a Walmart or eat at a chain restaurant, although they have their time and place. But as a small business owner, it's always my goal to seek out a local downtown, spend money that supports another small business. I look at our downtown, and within a few mile radius, we have the Hart Raider Sports Complex, the Aquatic Center, Virginia Techniques, and now our amazing Huckleberry Park. I imagine we serve thousands of young athletes and their families each year, and I bet they would have and love to do the same thing that I do when I travel, visit a downtown. Our handful of annual community events are amazing, absolutely worthwhile, but wouldn't it be amazing if people came downtown for a work lunch or on a Saturday to meet a friend instead of just at these one-off events, right? Wouldn't it be remarkable to treat our downtown as a continuous community gathering space instead of an event space? And an executive director could do this and help us. I often leave our town to drive to Floyd or Blacksburg to enjoy their downtown, and Pulaski and Withville, who you've heard tonight are both part of the Main Street program. I'd much prefer to spend money where I live. I want to grab my coffee and take a yoga class, of course, have lunch here in my downtown. I don't want to have to go somewhere else. And I know you understand that in providing this new position as a downtown executive director. I believe it will pay for itself by opening this vault of grant opportunities for our community, as well as the learning opportunities for that person in that role. But why now, right? Being part of these programs and moving Christiansburg forward more and more through these grant opportunities will take time. It's a process, but the sooner we get this person in this role, the sooner we'll see benefits reaped. Or maybe look at it this way, I was an art major, so my math might be soft on this, but, so you're not just getting a new executive director for this salary, but you're getting 21 already committed, already engaged volunteer community members. That's like 22 people for one salary. That seems like a really pretty good deal to me. So as the board and member of DCI, you heard tonight, engineers, economic developers, teachers, small business owners, graphic designers, people who love this community and want to come downtown and see it thrive, we are all already all in. It's a lot of alls. DCI is an organization that's been around since 2013. As Ellie mentioned, we've been waiting and planning and doing what we can for nearly 11 years, and it's just time for the next step. And I always tell my kids, if you don't ask the question, the answer remains no. But if you do ask the question, it just might be yes. So tonight, I'd like to respectfully ask you to reconsider returning to the conversation about this new position back on your next budget work session discussion. I know you heard commitment and felt the passion that DCI shared with you today, and all these people that are here supporting it. Our community is standing here, ready to work with and for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else would like to, access a comment?
Hi, Mike Scarry, 11 Pepper Street, Christiansburg. I've been a downtown resident since 2006, but my wife and I love it here. We've raised our family here. We've loved that, we love the downtown area, we love the whole town. I wanted to come tonight and speak in support of you guys funding. of you guys funding the executive director position for DCI. As many other commenters have already said, number one, it's going to be a good investment for the town, because we'll be able to apply for grants that will come back into town, bring money in from other places in the state or federally. Number two, as Chris mentioned, it's going to be a force multiplier. You're not just paying for one person. You're going to be getting all these people as well. We will amplify the efforts of the director. The director will amplify our efforts. So also, another commenter mentioned that was talking about some of the numbers from downtown Withville. He didn't bring up anything about economic impact or tax revenue. So I'd like you guys to look into that as well, what downtown Withville has brought in with their $20 million in public and private money. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael. Anyone else? Was that a movement to come forward?
I think he was just...
I'll close, hereby closing citizen's comments. We'll move to committee reports. Have a street committee report, Mr. Bishop and Ms. Hockett. Okay.
So the street committee this evening discussed the subdivision of a plat tax map number 558-8-24 in the Bonning Grant Corporate Park. They would like to, this is currently one parcel. They would like to divide this into two parcels, New Lot A being the lot at the top of this map, New Lot B being at the bottom along this road here that would divide them. And we also discussed the dedication of Parkway Drive, southeast right-of-way. So right now, Parkway Drive, if, correct me if I'm wrong, it ends. We want to, they're going to extend that in between these two lots. And there are several utility easements that would be dedicated as well. The street committee discussed this and agreed to support this. I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
A second.
Get a motion in a second. Any comments, Mr. Wilson?
I'm good.
Okay. Oh, you are. I know where you stand. Ms. Hicks?
For the community or for this? Not for this, I'm so sorry.
Okay. Mr. Jenkins?
No.
Ms. Bowman?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Uh-huh.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is 6-0. Thank you. Discussion in action by mayor and council, the reappointment of Dr. Sharon Scott to the Montgomery County Regional Solid Waste Authority Board of Directors for a four-year term beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2028.
Make a motion we approve.
She's here, too.
She is here, Karen. Thank you. Nothing.
Okay. And I will just stand here.
So you like what you're doing, don't you?
Yeah, I love it. I am the at-large member. I also serve as vice chair. I chose to serve because I wanted to make sure that our local haulers were being treated fairly. So I'm kind of a watchdog in that capacity. I also love the innovation that takes place. We've got a great executive director, but that whole team, the culture there, is outstanding. So yes, I would love to have your support to serve for another four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions?
I'm glad you're part of it. Thank you for your time and your service to the community.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Uh-huh.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
That is 6-0. Thank you. We have a request by Cambria Storage Partners LLC for ordinance amending Chapter 34, Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the Christiansburg Town Code by adding a Section 34-27, Operation of Golf Carts on Public Streets Regarding Provisions for the Limited Operation of Golf Carts on Town Public Streets.
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
Now, motion in a second. Any discussion?
I do. I want a little bit of explanation about...
Well, the request comes from basically the Midway or I guess the Varsity Storage that's on Cambria Street. They're developing more mini warehouse units on the other side of Cambria Street, and they would like to be able to cross basically with their property manager for those two facilities, the street on a golf cart. And in order to do so, it basically requires town council action and adoption of an ordinance to allow golf carts on public streets. And you can only allow it in certain limited instances, but this would meet that situation.
And they will have a crosswalk there? They will be limited to the boundaries of the crosswalk?
They will have basically a crossing location seen there. And so, yes, they would be limited to crossing at that location.
No, I don't have any issue with that, but I do have a concern or I guess a question regarding this. So I understand why it was made, and I understand it totally makes sense. Now, as far as the ordinance amending Chapter 34, how do you really specify? And can you even specify that under the town code of Christiansburg to allow one business, but not allow the rest of the community to use them?
It's location-specific. So it's not specific to them. It's actually specific to the location.
But on the code, it says, "Traffic and motor vehicles of the Christiansburg Town Code by adding Section 34 to 27, Operation of Golf Cars on Public Streets Regarding Provisions for the Limited Operation of Golf Cars in Town Public Streets." There is, don't you have to add something in there that says, "With a permit or something like that for a specific location?" Because otherwise, wouldn't we open ourselves up for everybody to have a golf cart?
The way it's drafted, it is limited to the area crossing Cambria Street, basically within 200 feet of the intersection of Providence Boulevard. And that's the only location in town that it would be allowed. And it's not just for their business. Technically, anybody could cross there with a golf cart.
But you're not allowed on the street, right?
Well, they'd be allowed on the street, too, at that location.
Does that help?
Read the doc.
It's what Randy described. It's just that location.
I would love to have a golf cart through town. Hey, maybe that's a great way to...
Code of Virginia does limit that you can't just do it everywhere in town. It's got to be on certain streets. It's got to be basically streets 25 miles an hour or less. You can only cross other streets on golf carts. You can't ride on any streets with a speed limit of over 25.
Thank you for the clarity.
Sure, sure.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Uh-huh.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you. That is 6-0. Zoning request by Redford Development of Virginia LLC, property owner and High Tech Collision LLC applicant to rezone approximately 2.265 acres of property located on the east side of intersection of Badger Street Northwest and Elk Drive Northwest, Tax Parcel 525-A-44A from B3 General Business District to I-1 Limited Industrial. Property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the Christopher Comprehensive Plan. Public hearing was held on March 12, 2024, and I believe that was a 5-0 recommendation from Planning Commission.
Make a motion to approve items in...
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Uh-huh.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
6-0. Conditional use permit request by Redford Development LLC, property owner, High Tech Collision LLC applicant to allow for an automobile and truck recreational vehicle assembling, painting, upholstery, repairing, and rebuilding or reconditioning body or fender work, including a commercial garage towing service, an automobile body shop on approximately 2.265 acres located east side of intersection of Badger Street and Elk Drive, Tax Parcel 525-A-44. Property is designated as residential on the future land use map of the town of Christiansburg.
Make a motion to approve items in...
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Uh-huh.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
Thank you. Issuance of a Resource Authority VRA bond for improvement projects of the wastewater treatment plant.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Any comments or discussions?
And we still don't have an amount, correct? No, you'll, if this is just a motion to move forward, you will get a total bond resolution with a whole packet of more than enough documents that you'll approve again with another resolution once we get to the completion of that.
Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop.
Uh-huh.
Councilwoman Bowman.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hockett.
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilman Wilson.
Aye.
We've been asked to set a standing town council work session date and time, and we have kicked them around. I think if you look, Ms. Bowman has the third Tuesday of each month that is in a meeting. Is that correct? I have the third Monday. So we're trying to put our heads together and thinking about the third Wednesday.
Works for me.
Okay. And again, it would be a set date. If there's no agenda, we'll cancel it. But we feel it's a good time to talk about some things that probably would speed up, as far as questions, would probably speed up the council meetings a little bit if we have a general understanding before we get to it. We'll not make any decisions on those, but at least we'll have a chance to air whatever concerns or questions we have. So the second Wednesday of, the third Wednesday of each month? Does that work?
It's great for me.
All right, it worked.
Second Wednesday.
Third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday.
Third Wednesday.
We don't need to make a motion or anything to set that, do we? Or do we?
I don't, I think so. If council is in agreeance that that is a good time? Okay.
What time?
Well, there you go. 6:30. But what we would like to do, and Ms. Hockett and I discussed this earlier, we'd like to set this at an hour limit of an hour and a half. I mean, there's no need to meet three hours on this and then come back the following week and meet another three hours on it. So I'd like to start at 6:30 and a time limit of 8 o'clock, unless council agrees to stay later to talk. Sound reasonable?
Yes, I'm taking it.
All right, thank you. Discussion of potential code amendment to the Christiansburg Town Code, Chapter 42, Section 42-664, home stay. Prevent a home stay use to operate from an accessory structure. And in discussing this, and we can discuss it more, in discussing this with Randy and Andrew, this is a, it's a code amendment, so we'll have to go to planning.
I, I, we actually talked about it, him and I, right? That we would really like to send it to Planning Commission, but I would like to make a comment regarding this. When I, I'm sending this to Planning Commission, I am sending them with...
We are sending it.
Well, I am to, right now. But what I'm saying is, right now, I would like to, to Planning Commission to tell them that this, I am more so into the sense that I want to vote for something to allow homeowners who have more, I guess, less rights against them about not being able to be at the property so close or whatever. I'm okay with them allowing them to rent for short terms and not having to live on the property. And that's my insistence.
Okay. So Randy, will you...
So that would be a clarification of that. So you would like them to also consider allowing a home stay without being a permanent resident?
I, yes.
Of the, okay, because that would, that is a little different than what was on the old, on the applicant, or on the agenda. So just wanted to clarify.
Well, can I add that to the...
Do you want them to consider only for accessory units? I think that the gentleman that was requesting was actually requesting only for accessory units on basically the same property as...
His property.
As the homeowner's property. You can consider either, you know, any way you want. And essentially, what the requister is asking is that town basically study on their own without him paying the code amendment fee.
Which I'm okay with that. I think I am okay with the owner not having to live close to the property even.
And like I say, you can send it to Planning Commission kind of any way you want them to look at it. You can have them look at it as, do you want to allow home stays other than being resided in more than 50% of the time? Because that would also meet his ask. I think his ask is probably a little more limited, because he's asking that you look at only allowing it in home stays on the same property where there's already an existing residence where the homeowner lives at least half the time.
That was what I got out of.
And that's the way he's requesting it.
That's what you requested, but I think as far as like even owning properties or whatever, and this has nothing to do with me, because you wouldn't apply me, I don't have short-term rentals. But as far as this, I would like to ease in some of those restrictions on homeowners. Because as long as they're paying their taxes, and we have a lot of ordinances that keep homeowners from, you know, having parties on their places and noise ordinances and all kinds of other restrictions for them. I think what I like to see out of this is definitely have less restrictions on homeowners and really have, give them an allowance to be able to have a property that it may be, you know, short-term rentals, but they don't have, they are not limited to having to live there themselves.
The best of both worlds. I don't, I am not totally for this, for a, someone to build a piece of, build a garage or a mother-in-law suite on the back of their house that may encroach on some of the property easement lines. I think that what happens if you make it carte blanche, that you can just do this, then you've taken away the rights of the other property owners, the neighbors on all sides in order to come and talk and speak and oppose or not oppose. If you give them a carte blanche, that you can just do this, then I think that we're not doing the other citizens fair justice without having this thing in some final form. So I would not, and I, you know, I think the person who requested this, So I would not, I would, I, and I, you know, I think the, the custom, the person that requested this, and the reason we have Airbnbs, and I think this is what they're talking, or B and Bs, or, or whatever they are, you know, they have to be, they have to, people have to, the owners have to reside in the property.
That's the way our, our ordinance is currently drafted, they have to live there at least fifty percent of the time.
Well, if, if this property that, that this consumer is asking about is on his property, and he is living there, I don't, I mean, I don't see any, any real problem. I don't want to get into someone saying, and I think that there was some state legislation that came out, that they were trying to say that, oh, yeah, you can build up to fifteen hundred square feet on your property, and your neighbors don't have any say whether you do or not, as far as being able to protest, or at least give their opinion of it, and, and whether for it or against it. So I don't want to take, I don't want to take the, the, I don't want to take the rights out of the existing property owners, but I think the exist, the property owner in this case probably has a legitimate ask for it, and it's not, not hard to study, but I, I don't want to open up that can of worms and just says, anybody can build what they want in the backyard, and the neighbors can take a hike, and we're not going to do that.
I don't understand, um, where, where does that come in about building anything in the property? I.
If we amend that code, it would, would it basically not give someone the right to build?
I don't think so.
Uh, well, if, if they would qualify for an accessory unit, then, then they could. You know, in this case, he already has an accessory unit. Whether the unit was there as, like, an in-law suite, or whether it was there as a separate unit, I can't.
Studio, I think's what he said.
Can't tell you off the top of my head, but, you know, there are some, some units in town that have accessory units with them for different reasons. Some of them are legally conforming, some of them are grandfathered.
I just don't want to get any type of, anything out that's going to circumvent having to go through the application and the, and all of our checks, and all of our balances, and all of our inspections, just so somebody can rent a room for the weekend.
I guess what I would look at, that's if I took my property, and I said, "Go ahead and buy me one of these, what do you call, tiny houses, tiny homes?" And by code, if I was allowed to put that in my backyard, can I turn around and rent that out?
Uh, under the current code right now, you could not.
Could not.
You would have to live in that unit at least fifty percent of the time.
Right, but I think we're trying to change that.
Yes, he's asking to be able, if that unit's on the same property where he lives, to be able to rent it out full-time.
As long as it falls within town code.
He's asking for a code amendment to, to allow that.
Okay.
So does that change if it's single family to the R two model?
State legislation, too, so.
Yeah. So let's turn it over to Planning Commission, as far as, let them talk about, as far as the, the fee, I, meter fish, it doesn't matter.
All right.
But the one thing about not, not having him do that, not having him pay the fee, then we do not notify his neighbors that this change is coming up.
We would not notify neighbors of a code change. If the code change, and let's say the Planning Commission were to recommend a code change and require a conditional use permit for an accessory apartment, which is possible, he would have to apply for a conditional use permit, and the, his neighbors would get a notification if that's the case.
All right. You good on that one? All right?
Yep.
And finally, the clarification request, development of the request for a proposal for commercial broker on that five-acre property on southeastern intersection of Pepper's Ferry Road, did we decide we're gonna, we're not gonna do that at the last meeting?
I, I think I kind of heard at the, like, last regular meeting, I think it was general direction to proceed that way, although at the closed meeting, at the end of that, I think I had direction to, I guess, enter into agreement to sell a portion of the property. And I was just wondering, do you still want to proceed with that, considering that we're going to be selling a portion of the property?
I would like to see it for the older piece of property, not for the one that, are we under contract? Well, obviously, you cannot get under contract, yep, but have you been approved to get, uh, from the other people? Did they sign the documents?
We, they're, they're not signed yet, but they've agreed to it verbally.
No, that's a question.
So, do you want to market that other two-acre portion, or do you want to just let Randy sell it?
I, I would like to market it.
Okay.
I, I, I would like first to have a work session and talk about that other piece of property before we put it on the market. I think in our first next work session, and I, I think we really need to have a discussion about uh, what we're going to do with all the rest of the parcels there, and a parking dilemma. There's multiple issues I think we have out there as a council that we need to look at towards the future. And so before we, we, to paint something marketing, I'm not against marketing it, if we decide that um, we don't need to do something as far as additional parking goes.
Okay.
But I think we need to address the parking issue before we sell off any more pieces of land out there.
Okay.
My opinion.
Okay, thank you. Uh, and that would be a very, very good subject possibly, for that third Wednesday in April meeting, if we're not tied up with the budget.
I think I'm going to be on vacation now.
The no budget.
Seriously, I didn't know you all had planning.
That's okay, I think we, we, we'll let you go. We'll let you go. So that's, uh, basically.
We'll see, I might be back.
Okay, so that's, we'll, we'll take a look at it before we put it on the market. Town manager, any reports?
I have, I guess, a few dates for you. Friday, March twenty-ninth, this Friday, we're having the Huckleberry Park Extreme Easter Egg Hots, and that'll be at Christiansburg Huckleberry Park. That's adults, eighteen and over. Uh, there's music and games at seven o'clock, and eight o'clock, the egg hunt for prizes. Saturday, March thirtieth, at Coatis Park, we've got the Great Easter Egg Hunt for children twelve and under, and it begins at ten AM. Also, I'll let you know that we're going to be doing leaf, leaf giveaway on Friday, April twelfth, from noon to four PM, and from Saturday, April thirteenth, from eight to noon, at two fifty, Scattered Good Drive, on our Public Works Complex. Also, I'll mention that Parks and Recreation is looking at having kind of a kickoff event at Huckleberry Park. We're looking at May twenty-third at noon, and we'll invite council to that. And it's just kind of a, kind of a grand opening of the park for, for spring. We're calling it, I guess, tentatively, uh, Huckleberry Park, Christiansburg Huckleberry Park, Spring and Summer Kickoff, is what we're looking at.
All right.
That's all I've got.
Yeah. Mr. Walton? Any other staff here that would like to comment?
One thing I would ask, do you want a budget work session? And obviously, I think, uh, the RFP for Commercial Broker Services would be a potential April seventeenth topic.
Yes. Or just the general use of that property?
Yes.
The residue property.
Would you want a budget work session ahead of that?
For wedding?
The, the use of the commercial real estate, the service for the property at the park.
That's for the.
That, that'd be on April seventeenth is when we'll have that work session. Do you want a budget work session ahead of that?
I would be here for that, meaning, that's my wedding anniversary, and this is twenty-five years.
Okay.
Checked out for that one.
Yes to a budget work session.
Do you have a time and preferred date?
I don't.
I would, I, I would think that, uh, there's a lot of information in this budget to digest, although it is the same format that we have had for years. There's a lot of information on there. I, I feel that before we present to council, and I think we have to present it in May, or the public hearing in May, the first public hearing, and the second public, the second hearing will be the fourth, the end of May?
There's only one public hearing.
One public, and then our.
Then you can, after seven days after the public hearing, you can vote on the budget after seven days.
Okay. That might be a great, well, I, I, I think that we will want a, a, uh, a work session, and I think that, uh, Mr. Tweedy, if you can get us the general times that you're going to be around.
I'm okay with May, but the third Wednesday in May is getting pretty late, so.
Okay. All right, well, I mean, we could do something prior, too, uh, even if it's an additional work session on the Wednesday following the next town council meeting.
Point out, there's actually five Tuesdays in April, too.
Well, we got something. Second, third, fourth, fifth, first, yeah, so we got, so we do have a couple. Well.
Just a reminder, we do have a business meeting, Central Businesses meeting on April the tenth, Wednesday, at six thirty PM.
Okay. All right.
So you don't schedule stuff for that Wednesday?
Okay. April tenth is not a, a valid.
Would, would April thirtieth be too late?
Is what?
April thirtieth is our budget work session. If it, that's the fifth.
Oh, okay. That's, that's, that's fine, that's, that's fine with me, and I, it'd be able to pick a date right now that everybody's going to agree on, I'm not sure. But we have a majority that is willing to meet on April thirtieth, so we'll, we'll set that work session, budget work session, April thirtieth.
Time?
Huh?
Time, six thirty.
Six thirty. Is that a, is it features, six thirty features scheduled, or do you want to go five o'clock, or?
No, six thirty.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
And then, that's limited. Um, I do have other committees and other meetings that I attend in the community. I, I, when we talk about the, the budget stuff or whatever, can you change the Hill Johnson Chair thing to, I think his position, it says right here that he ended on twenty, that expires on twenty twenty-third, but I thought we gave him another four or three years.
I think it expires in twenty twenty-seven, so.
Okay. Now, council reports, and before I, before I get too far into this thing, I had a letter from Gunn and Karen, who is the president of the Legal Women Voters. And she has asked, she's told me that they are having a, they'd like to invite all elected officials to their annual dinner, dinner on May the fourteenth, and would like to mail personal invitations to them individually. So what she has asked is if I would provide, I'm going to ask council, is it all right for you all, for me to provide your addresses to her for this, for this purpose? Okay. That sounds good. Mr. Bishop?
Uh, no reports.
Ms. Hicks?
Just as a reminder, once again, we are meeting for Central Businesses on April the tenth, Wednesday, six thirty PM. We'd love to see DCI there, and any of the, the people there, um, to help us with this, and help Amanda also. If there is any way that she can help downtown with the economic development, so she can use all of these uh, ways to do, um, and improve a lot of more of the businesses downtown. Just a reminder, I do love my community as well. I am a hundred percent invested in this community. Just not through my businesses downtown, my family, as a public servant. And then even, just even like you mentioned, I, I was glad that you mentioned our kids tonight. This has been really rough week.
Mr. Jenkins.
Nothing to report.
Ms. Hockett.
Nothing to report.
Ms. Bowman.
Nothing to report.
I would like to thank everybody for. Mr. Wilson, I'm sorry, out of sight, out of mind.
No, I, I'm good.
Okay. Thank you. I would like to thank everyone that came out tonight, and appreciate your input, there's some valuable information given. Is there anything else to come before the council? We are adjourned, thank you.